Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the last regularly scheduled council meeting for this fiscal year. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. For the record, Ms. Newman has not yet arrived. Okay, if the clerk would read the changes, please.
To the consent agenda, we're removing item 5B, resolution reappointing Bruce Dunigan to the Biloxi Civil Service Commission, substituting 5BB resolution to recognize grant funds for Howard Creek Bridge replacement, and adding 5EE resolution authorizing purchase of TASER 10 system from Exxon Enterprise, Inc.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Sure, Mr. Lawrence. Well, let's get a first and a second, then we'll discuss. Oh, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, all right.
I'm doing it part of the change.
Gotcha.
I think I recommend to the rest of the council, we have so many people that are putting on as the boards that goes into effect of 28 and 29, and I really feel like the newly affected elected official in next year should vote on this, not us. You got the same people been there, okay, you get somebody new, you get three or four new councilmen, get a new mayor, and then you gotta go around and change all this again. I think it should actually just wait until like July or August of next year, after the election, everybody's sworn in, and you put, just like you have a problem right here with Bruce, we changed a lot of these ward lines, and you gotta make sure these people live in the correct wards also. Just like what happened to him, he wound up out of Ward 6, and he lives in 4 now. So those things need be, but my thing was, I think the people that's elected for the next four years should vote on this, not us now, putting these people back in order. That's just my suggestion to y'all. I would like y'all to think about that for a second, see if y'all want to change that and vote again. I would just, all you do is table them all until next August.
All right.
And they're still on the board, they're still serving, nobody's going anywhere, and half of them are 22 and 23, they're already two years out of line anyway. Some are pretty old. And I think it'd be best that the new council, the new mayor, whoever it might be, would put those people in place. Just my suggestion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Is there any other discussion on that, or any thoughts on that by the council? There don't appear to be any. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the amended, as the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence.
And I'll second.
By Mr. Guines. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. McGilvery.
Reference to the 5B, I recommend that we table this issue, reason being Bruce Dunigan, as far as the accounting reflects, has been living in Ward 6. Bruce Dunigan has been living in Ward 4 for 20-plus years that I know of, as well as Dwight Johnson, who is also on the commission representing Ward 4. I don't know where the confusion is, but I'd like to make a motion that we table this till we can look into the issue.
Item 5B, would it, beg your pardon?
It's removed.
It's, okay, it's already been removed, all right.
Retract that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any additional discussion, questions, concerns? There being none, call for the question. All in favor of the amended agenda? It's a 7-0 vote, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everyone. I hope everybody hit it good. We had a lot of Christmas activity last weekend, parades and toy giveaways and all kinds of things happening. But coming up, you know, I've got a couple of schedules to remind you. Of course, trash recycling, of course, City Hall will be closed Tuesday, Christmas Eve, and also Wednesday, Christmas Day. And trash and recycle will be pushed back another day. And same thing for New Year's. So we won't be meeting again until, I think, the second of January 2025. There's a Christmas cardboard recycling event that will happen on Saturday, the 28th. And if you want to call Harrison County Beautification, there'll be a Christmas tree recycling program too at some point after Christmas. And hopefully everyone has a great holiday, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no departmental reports. We'll move to the council reports. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence in Ward 1, please.
I've got a couple of things. On the Broadwater property, Foco, do we have to pass a resolution to get that clear cut?
We've been working to clear pass, not clear cut.
Yeah, we need to, you need to clear it out.
Well, we haven't done that yet.
But I said that we need to write a resolution to get it done. If we keep doing the same thing over and over and riding through it in a truck and not getting it done, it's not doing anything for the citizens of that area. So we have to pass the resolution, and we'll put one on the table and just clear cut the property, just like it should be done, just like anybody else's property.
There's a few matters to be considered, like, you know, what's legal and what's not legal. So that's, what we can do is what we're doing. And I think we're making some progress on arrests in some of the people who are moving elsewhere. But they're all moving elsewhere, and there have been problems elsewhere because of what we've done already there. So they're moving, moving the problem around, not fixing the problem.
Yeah, well, but the thing is, get that straight, and that neighborhood is straight.
Well, let me say about the Broadwater. What was the last census? About five people are living on it now, right? About five are on it. It used to be 80.
I don't know, three, four, five, doesn't matter. Don't need any of them. I'm just saying, you're gonna take care of a problem, you gotta take care of a problem. And the same thing with the methadone clinic. The problem with that, if you don't have security in a parking lot, they're gonna deal drugs all day long. Methadone, no different than any other drug.
Let me say code enforcement is there every day, every day.
Okay, so do they have security in the parking lot there?
I'm not sure.
How's they dealing that?
I'm not sure.
So those are the problems you have. And if you don't do anything about that, they should provide security, not us. But that's another thing. You let them deal, they're gonna deal in the parking lot. So that's the other. Went to the police department to party Saturday night, had a nice crowd. It was nice, everybody enjoyed that. And I know David probably gave us a report on the Walmart parade, a nice parade, great call that. I was riding a 2022, phew, that thing's fine, fine automobile. And the other thing, did you give an update on the audit? Since we chucked about that last week, have you done anything on the audit?
Yeah, I think they're still reviewing it.
What?
I think Diana, I'm not sure whether they'll present it on the January, the first meeting in January or not, but their final motions and final corrections.
Yeah, okay, you gotta keep that stuff updated, otherwise that's when you get in trouble with the family and the media group and the money and that. So that stuff's gotta stay, they gotta get that taken care of as quick as you can. Get it updated like it should be.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines, Ward 2.
Yes, just want to report on the weekend. As the mayor said, there were a lot of great activities this weekend. There was a big toy giveaway on Sunday, Sunday evening. Gave away 500 toys from the Movers and Shakers and the City of Biloxi partnering together, 500 toys for a lot of, lot of underprivileged kids. And they had a special presentation by St. Felix Navidad to show up and make sure he took care of all the kids and make sure they all got presents. So with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman in Ward 3.
Well, George touched mostly on the methadone clinic and the Broadwater, so I guess I don't have to go deep into it. But I guess Jerry Krill's not here to give us an update. Okay. Any update on what we are doing at the Broadwater to get the rest of the people off?
Well, like I said, we hit our last, since you, Chris, want to give an update?
So we're continuing to go out there and use the pass that they clear cut to find anybody that's out there. We have, over the last week or so, we have found some people that recently came down, trying to identify them, why they came down here, explain the rules to them, things of that nature, get them off the property. But there's, there's few that are staying there as compared to before. Most of the ones we come in contact are newer people. And then we, we have crews that, you know, focus on the south side of the neighborhood there. The, but we're continuing our progress. And then as, as we go with the owners of the property, seeing what they're willing to do and everything else to help facilitate the cleanup and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Are we still working on a police substation?
We have some ideas, but not at that property, not because of the Buvole property.
Buvole property?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery in Ward 4.
Just a couple items, Mr. President. Mary, as you know, we had my first Ward 4 meeting at De Sunkist. I think it was very well attended. Appreciate you being there, Mr. Linder being there, and all the directors. There was a lot of questions, a lot of answers. Of course, the major issue, I think, was the golf cart situation. Chief Miller did an outstanding job in answering the questions mostly. He had some group that was there that feels that no enforcement should have taken place a month and a half ago. And then the other part of the group felt the enforcement should have been taking place all the time. So it was a double-edged sword, I'll use his words. I've spoken to a lot of folks in Sunkist in the past two or three days, and I'm sure then that we're gonna take a look at that. The fee of $75 for registration seemed to be a major issue with the ones that have spoken with me. So I'm gonna be looking into that and see if maybe we can adjust it, or see what the basis for the $75 fee was based on. And the second item, finally, the cell towers at the Margaret Share are in the process of being taken down. I think probably in two or three more weeks that, that'll be completed, thanks to Christie over in Public Works has really helped me speed that up. The walking track repairs, about 50% completed. I think the county advised me the other day, a couple more weeks. The weather got involved, it slowed repairs down. But it's looking real good. I think it'll be real nice. I know all the lights have already been replaced at the walking track, so that's a plus. And with the help of Ms. Rachel, the lights on the Pops Ferry Bridge, 11 need to be replaced. It's down to four. One has some electricity issues, and the other three have parts on order. I think we'll see those all repaired within the next week or two. And that's about it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavin in Ward 6.
Yeah, I got a few things. A couple of these are related to some Christmas parties, but it was pretty, pretty emotional and pretty neat. I'd like to thank Major General Davinson and Colonel Pope for inviting my wife and I and others to a progressive reception at both of their homes. They kind of live side by side in Cusler Housing. But what was pretty neat is that they had a Christmas tree, a Gold Star family Christmas tree. And all the Gold Star family loved ones were, their names were on a plaque in front of the tree, and the tree was decorated with ornaments with their names on them as well. So that was pretty emotional and pretty neat to see. Also attended the Biloxi Police Department Christmas party. It was pretty well attended, the food was good, and got to chat with a few of the police officers and thank them for a job well done, and hopefully their Christmas is wonderful. And then we walked across the street, Biloxi School District was having their Christmas party across the street, and they had some great food there too, and talked to those educators and teachers, and they really are committed to the education of our youth and to their profession. And so hats off to all those guys and ladies that are pursuing those careers and beyond the career, contributing to the success of our future. I also got a call from Bill Thompson. He asked me to report a pothole on Motzy Road and Pops Ferry. Haven't had a chance to submit that to Craig Ross yet, but I figured I'd make that a part of my report. And with that, that'll conclude my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Schumaker in Ward 7.
Yes, sir, I have a few things. The roundabout on Shriners, they've been working at night. Luckily, it looks like they're getting some things done finally, some curbing, and it looks like they're doing a lot of dirt work, hopefully gonna be paving soon. So hopefully that works well and continues at the rate it's going now and no rain. Hopefully the rain doesn't slow them up at all. Christmas parade, we had our Christmas parade last Saturday. I think it was very well attended, very well participated, and we had a lot of participants. Several of the councilmen came out, rode in some nice Corvettes, new Corvettes. The weather was beautiful. I think, you know, we had at least what we, the participants that we had last year, it seemed like there was maybe even more this year. Santa Claus was at the old elementary gym, and a lot of kids went there. They had some snacks and cookies. So it was very well organized too. Director Bell and Jamie Hagman, kudos to them, because they did a great job organizing it. And they did most all of that. And I know they have to do it every year on top of everything else they do, but thanks to them, they did a great job. Homeless, I know I brought up homeless last week. I've had a few more calls this week, and I know that's a hot topic every week. But again, the police department's doing a great job. It's very temporary, that solution. And I know, hopefully, as a group, we're all working. I've been making calls as well, trying to get a solution. I don't know what that solution is, and I don't know that anybody knows the solution right now. But hopefully, moving forward in the new year, we can continue trying to figure the solution out and get a resolution and get that moving early, because it's beginning to be, or I say beginning, it's a problem, and I think it's getting worse. And lastly, and I know this is gonna sound probably very petty, but Christmas lights hanging on telephone poles in the city. You know, in the scheme of things, maybe it's petty when we're saving money and need to be fiscal with the money we spend. But I gotta be honest, a lot of people like to see Christmas lights at Christmas time in the city, and we have one on one telephone pole in Ward 7. And it was put up, I don't know, three or four days ago. Kind of a moot point, quite frankly, when it's two weeks away from Christmas. I don't know what we can do. I've made some calls, and apparently we need new Christmas lights for the whole city, for town green. And I didn't realize this during the budget year, I would have brought something up. But moving forward, that's something maybe at least the council can look at, and I think we need some new lights. I don't know how everybody else is with Christmas lights, but I've been running through the coals the last couple of weeks about it, believe it or not. But anyway, hopefully we can get some new Christmas lights for next year to add to the one, single one that we have in Walmart. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I have a few things. I'd mentioned several times over the past few years about replacing the fence at the north end of Balmarl. Most recently, I mentioned it maybe the last council meeting or the council meeting before. Now having residents tell me that coyotes have been sighted in that neighborhood, they're worried about their pets and their personal safety. And along the north, along the railroad tracks, that seems to be the only break in the fence line there until you get to Edgewater Mall back around there. So I told them I'd mention it today in hopes that we'd get that section of fence replaced. Appears to be an eight-foot fence. I don't think it's a 10-foot fence, and it just spans roughly the width of the road, so maybe it's three lanes wide. The Broadwater property, how long have we been dealing with the Broadwater property and the homeless?
Years.
Years. So we have, we have an ordinance 13114, and I can make these available later to mayor, to your administrators. And basically, it says you can't, you can't loiter on or adjacent to private or public property, particularly residential property. So these folks have been loitering, living, but loitering for years and years. The second thing is that property that's in a state of uncleanliness is to be a nuisance or public health and public safety issue. And obviously, it is if we have police running through that property on ATVs now for a number of months. And if it's not abated, once they've received written notice, then there's a public hearing, there's a process to be followed. Mr. Lawrence had mentioned this, I think, maybe twice previously, most recently at the last council meeting, is we just need to follow the ordinances. That's what we need to do. And certainly, we need to move forward to a resolution. And I, Mr. Lawrence mentioned clear cutting the property. I think he meant just bush hogging the undergrowth or whatever. That would be helpful. And if there are legal issues, then I think our city attorney ought to work with those, with the attorney of representing those property owners. But we need to move forward to some sort of resolution. And typically, what would happen is they receive a notice of violation. If there's, if it's not resolved within a specified period, a reasonable specified period, then they're, they have a public hearing and hear before us, and then at some point, there may be community court, civil issues, and so forth. But I mention that simply because it's been an ongoing issue now for several years. We really, we haven't gotten much closer towards a resolution. And if it was anybody else in the city, we would have just followed the process, and it would have been resolved one way or another by now. That's, that's my Christmas wish. The next thing is, coincidentally, I just made a note here that my Christmas decorations, Mr. Schumaker, in Ward 5 are up 14% this year. They went, they went up from seven decorations to eight decorations. So anything we can do, and I think that's through Main Street, and I just wish they'd give some thought to where they're gonna put them. There's, folks go to Edgewater Mall, they turn down Pass Road, up Eisenhower, we have one Christmas light there. So anyway, tis the season. The other thing is, after all of that, I hope everybody has a nice, terrific Christmas with family and friends, and everybody be safe. That concludes my comments. We'll move on to the public agenda. We'll allot up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. Anyone who wishes to address the council, please come up to the microphone. You have to get kind of close so people can hear what's being said. Be sure to sign in. Once you're recognized, I'll ask you to state your name for the clerk, so we can be sure that it's on the record. The clerk will then start the digital clock, and when your three minutes are up, you'll hear this sound. There you go. That's almost a Christmas sound. Thank you. All right, having said that, yes, ma'am, will you tell us your name, so the clerk can record that, please? Sure. Ma'am, excuse me, just could you repeat your name, please?
Vera.
Okay, last name?
Walker.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Go ahead.
I'm here for three reasons. First, stochastic terrorism. That's when a group of people, seemingly unrelated, but united in cause and actions. In my situation, the cause began with the whistleblower, me. As Paul was informed by the Department of Education regarding the use of federal funds provided by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, the action taken by these terrorists may be, but are not limited to stalking electronically, physically, internally, internet, Bluetooth, tracking devices, lookouts, grocery stores, churches, parks, et cetera. I informed each mayor and police department, nothing yet. Second, to say hello to the former superintendent. Many of you may not know that the same year, 2010, Paul retaliated by firing me from the school district. He also resigned before the school year began. What if the whistleblower complaint informed the Department of Education about the misappropriation of funds, violation of policies, discrimination, civil rights violations Title VI, falsifying records and monies, defrauding the public employee's retirement system, misuse of funds, retaliation, sexual harassment of teachers came later? Lastly, some of you may remember a teacher being arrested in Upper Mississippi. I couldn't find the article, but I do remember. She said her district kept two sets of books. I'd like to ask Paul if the Biloxi School District kept two sets of books, one for payroll and another for personnel records marked for theft by race or gender. I'll ask Mark it later on today. Mayor, Police Chief, there are violations of the Safe Streets Act and the American with Disabilities Act. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Is anybody else, anyone else who wishes to speak on my left?
Thank you for hearing me today.
If you would, if you would.
I'm here because we have an issue.
Mr. Gazza, if you would, state your name.
Yeah, Gazza Junior, 9024 Riverbird Drive, Biloxi, Mississippi. I'm here today because we've been having a little issue. We follow the rules for the bourse in the cage right across the street from the stadium. We park in that area. There's parking for four cabs there. Lately, Uber drivers have been pulling into that area, and what they do, they stagger themselves so none of the cabs can get in there. And they've been very irritable. And if you ask them to pull up a little bit, they use profanity and tell you what they think. And they do park in the no parking zone, where Biloxi came out a couple of weeks ago and said, do not park in that yellow striping. Our request is to get a taxi cab only sign in that area. Of course, we understand that when the cleanup crews come in and the guys that are working on the stadium, we move. And when the boat lets all that be done, then we leave. But our request is to get a sign right there, taxis only. All the Uber drivers, their calls are transferred off their square, and we have to watch the boat, the way they fix the system. When one cab pulls up, the next cab pulls across the street. And it's continual flow like that. And our request, I'm representing all the cab drivers, and we do 80% of the cab business on the whole Mississippi Gulf Coast, associated with casinos and everything. And that's just a request that if y'all could, that would help everybody out, especially with the holidays coming. And I appreciate your time. God bless Biloxi, God bless you guys, and praise God. Thank you.
Mr. Gazza, what was your first name? I'm sorry.
Jack.
Jack, thank you.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir. Come on up, Mr. Silvestro.
Hi. I think everybody knows who I am by now, Bob Silvestro. It was really nice to listen to you guys today. It seems like some people have the passion to see that there's an issue at the Broadwater property and throughout the city. And I think maybe we should figure out a way to bring some people together that are not, have been brought together before. I don't think the ideas are working. And I, I'm watching older homeless people who've been living around by me, being beaten, robbed. It's unbelievable what's happening. So we have a group of people that I've physically watched go from homeless to, maybe the mayor helped them with an apartment, somebody did. They got a bicycle, a job, they still go to get some food, but I can slowly watch them getting bags at Walmart, they get an apartment, they get a piece of junk car, another guy helps them with the car, they move up. I watch what's happening. Then there's a group of Then there's a group of people who comes in like vultures and are taking advantage of people, they're getting people who came out of rehab to go back on drugs. I don't think they're even homeless, these people. We if we really care about the homeless, I don't understand why I've been here so many times and nobody representing the not-for-profits has come here and spoken unless they want something. I think we should sit down and look at the amount of money of grants, the amount of money of taxes the city's spending. It's got to be at least $100,000 per homeless person. And if you look just where I live, you can watch these poor families come up and the church gives them clothes and they take them and they pick the ones they want and they bring them home. And then there's a group who grabs a shopping cart, takes them, I don't know what they're doing, they throw them all over the place. It's terrible. Go back to the library today and look at all the shopping carts. And I understand, I know it's a different issue, that people take a shopping cart to a bus stop. But when I lived in New Jersey, the same problem happened and you know how they solved it? They put barriers up right before you get to the parking lot. So all of us people had to take all our groceries and walk all the way to the car. So all I'm saying is ahead of time, could we possibly, I'd like to be part of it, bring some people together, give Walmart a chance, give whoever else is a store just a chance. Maybe they have a side to this story we don't understand. I don't know, but it's just my advice that we're actually trying to help homeless people. And personally, six new people have came to my neighborhood just from Nashville this week, walking through. I'm sure the police can see it, but we Biloxi's closed. Thank you and thanks for speaking up, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Gentlemen on my left there in the middle, yes, sir.
My name is Maurice Ben. I'm Maurice Ben with the Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast and we are managing youth experience at the Community Expo on January 11th from 9:00 to 2:00, which will include 20 vendors from all over the state doing a lot of different programs for the youth. To include teeth cleaning talent shows, free physicals, and partners to come down to show what the youth with reckless driving looks like with damaged cars. But we received a text and not a phone call today that we were no longer able to use the Gruyere Center after we toured and was under the impression that we had it reserved. Now we need a space for this time and date.
Did you did you sign in? Sir, don't forget to sign in. And did that conclude your remarks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
M-E-Y-E-R. Godfrey.
Our first one of, thank you for having me today. I wanted to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and happy holidays, mayor, council members, audience. My name is Godfrey Meyer, if you didn't hear, and I moved here over seven years ago and I've been watching this city and living in this city and working in this city. And I want to thank you all for this last year that you've been here doing a fine job. I think most people agree and the city is a wonderful city to live in and to play and work. Like I said, I moved here seven years ago and I'm glad I did. I wish I moved here earlier, but I spent the reason, one of the reasons I'm here is to announce that I wish to run for council member, Ward One. And I think I could be a help to you all and help to the city, which I love. And I want to continue the the progress that I see around me in the city. Things have to be worked on, of course. There's new things that come up every day. And I just wanted to introduce myself to you all. I moved here, after I worked in the fire department, I retired as a fire captain in Palm Beach County, Florida, South Florida. And I'm very pro-public safety and we need that to operate and live in a in a good community. And again, I wish you all good luck for the new year and if you live in Ward One, please vote for me. Please vote for me, even if you're running against me.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Nobody else on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Yes, sir.
I have a recent transplant and it's been here about four years.
Yes, sir. If you would, go ahead and have a seat and sign in if you would and then state your name so that the clerk of council can record it and then you're off to the races.
My name is James Doyle. I arrived here about four years ago, right at the beginning of COVID, and I was homeless for about four or five months when I first arrived. I just want to sort of add on to this gentleman's comment. And I was one of those people who got help. Lady of Fatima helped me, Back Bay Mission, Feed the Sheep, and they helped me get back on my feet and get into housing along with I had some some local people telling me about getting my name on the waiting list at Biloxi Housing and I'm now at Seashore Oaks. And I just wanted to make the statement that it that there are people out there that can be helped. And I understand there are people that can't be helped and maybe there are some that are actively preying on the homeless as well. I just, if there's any action towards getting some sort of, setting up some sort of like a homeless center or a help center where the people that can be helped could be kind of sorted out, I think that would benefit some people. I think there are people out there that can be returned to a productive society. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Merry Christmas. Is there anybody else on my right, your left?
My name is Mary Seraphina and I live on Division Street. I live on the street that's between I-10 and I-110 and Back Bay Mission. And so right away, I'm thinking, know what problem I have? And people have recommended I come here and tell you just so that you're aware of it and it has to do with the homeless. Most of the homeless people who go by my house are just as nice as they can be. They say good morning, they tell me my house is beautiful, they tell me to make sure I stay hydrated when I'm mowing. They're just good people. But then there are some who who are not. Not that they're bad people, but they just create problems. I was vacationing in Texas when my camera picked up a woman in my backyard. And then two days later, when my friend went to water my plants, found that she was living in my home, eating my food, sleeping in my bed. She hid my family pictures so that people would think it was her home. This woman's not a thief or a criminal. She's mentally ill, I'm sure. But nevertheless, she invaded my privacy. I threw away everything I thought she touched. The police came, they were so good to respond and they went through my house and my friend identified, you know, what was the same as it should be and everything. And she was arrested and she was indicted and hopefully she'll get some kind of mental help as the end result of all this. But that's not the end of the problem because since then, I've had at least five visitors at my house. They might come at 11:00 at night, they might come at 2:00 in the afternoon, they ring my bell, they eat lunch on my front porch. The police have responded when I called them and they talked to them and probably that person hasn't come back again, but I'm no longer comfortable sitting on my front porch. I'm no longer comfortable walking in my neighborhood. And so I just came to tell you so you'd be aware of that that those things happen. It's not just, and it's a shame because most of the people who are homeless are okay. But then there are some. And just last week, one man, he was probably over six feet tall because he filled my whole doorway, he came up and he rang my bell. Didn't know the man and I have cameras so I have pictures of everybody. And so it just happens and it happens. Evidently, this woman may have entertained in my home, she may have, I don't know what. They know my last name. And so my house is going on the market. The realtor just came today and I'm selling my house, which is not very fair to me because I've worked really hard to restore that house, had to move back on the property and everything and restored that house. Anyway, that's my sad story for today. I just thought you should know it. I want you to know the police department has done a very good job of responding, but they can't watch it 24 hours a day. So thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for sharing your story. Is there anybody else on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Anybody in the back? There being none, we'll now move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A.
Orders amending salary and compensation of mayor and council members.
I made the motion, Mr. Lawrence seconded the motion. Just as a preface to voting and discussion, I wish to point out that looking at comments on social media, folks get excited about salaries. Imagine that. These salaries for the mayor and the council members are unchanged since 2009. So I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, that concludes my comments. Mr. Lawrence, anything?
I've been there six terms and we had 2% raise in 24 years. I think it's time to adjust the pay for the council. We had more meetings we ever had in our life the last 20 years. We had meeting after meeting after meeting and I just think it's time to make an adjustment for the city council to be allowed the rest of the councils on the coast. So what I'm going to do is turn this over to Kenny because Kenny got a few ideas and some of the things you'd like to present. So Kenny, you have the floor. Don't mess up.
Excuse me. Mr. Glavine, go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to say this, like Paul, I've, you know, got some of the data recently on the last time there's been any increase on the city council and the mayor. I'd like a little bit of time. We don't have to do this today. There's a timeframe, if I understand, within 90 days, correct, Peter? So we got a little bit of time. So I'd ask, let me get a little bit more information before we start moving forward with any kind of action today and perhaps just table this subject to call, but I'll make sure to bring it up, say in the next 30 days or or so to to bring some more information and get with the clerks and get some data that may be useful. You know, maybe it warrants, you know, a change, maybe not. But I'd like to ask the council to consider just kind of pause in this a little bit.
Is that your motion? So there's a, yeah, there's a motion to table this matter, subject to call, I believe is your comments. And there's a second by Mr. Guines. Discussion on this motion to table, is there any discussion? I believe it's Mr. Abad, I noticed, he shook his head, so as long as this is done 90 days prior to the election, I would, and is that the?
Exact language in the statute is prior to 90 days before the next general election. And then these, whatever is is done, takes effect in the next term.
Okay, so this is 90 days prior to the general election, which I think is June 2nd, 6th, somewhere that first week in June. All right. Any other discussion? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of tabling this matter, subject to call? It's a 7-0 vote. All right. Thank you all. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, questions on consent agenda items?
Not a whole lot on it. Half of it, just reappointing a lot of people.
Mr. Lawrence, is your mic, is your mic on? You may or you may need to get, you may need to get a little closer. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
It's working. I said, it's just really a lot of appointment, most of it, and the rest of the stuff is just on the, on the, oh, declared surface, what are we doing, what are we selling there? You got something authorized out in the cleared? Is that just, is that cars, trucks, what is that?
Boars and trucks.
Lawn moors and trucks, I believe.
Your exhibit should tell you what it is, but there's a lot of police equipment, including cars. We continue to, I think you see almost every month, we have enough additional stuff for sale. You know, and have been briefed, I'm sure, and you remember that we now use a, an agent that does that online and the, when the, each of the departments have a contact person.
There's nothing, you have declared purpose, you just sell it.
There is an exhibit with your resolution that lists the stuff that's on this particular sale.
I don't see anything on there. How's about it? There's not a whole lot on here. Most of it's just normal stuff. How about that? Merry Christmas, Gion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines, anything?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine, anything?
Nothing, no exceptions as well.
Mr. Shoemaker, just so happens, let me, on item, on item Q. Scratch it, never mind, on item Q. On item V for Victor, two things. Mike, if you'll make a note under, under Group B for the parcels that are are handled by this landscaping company, 168 Oakmont is listed twice. And then I noticed that they're listed alphabetically, there's a Group E, there's a Group G, but I didn't see a Group F. I can get with you after the meeting to go over all this again. So I don't know if Group F was left out or consolidated.
Left out, Group F.
I'm sorry. Wait, wait till you get to the mic. The whole world is watching.
Group F is actually by Gulf Breeze. That's the group that's under the interstate.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that's a different company.
So that's not assigned to this particular contract. It's a separate contract.
Gotcha. Okay.
And on Oakmont, those are, I think they both say 168 Oakmont, but it looks like they're two different tax parcels. And these might be the new, where the new road is going to.
Yes, right now they're suspended.
Gotcha.
When it for, until the construction is over.
Right.
There's those provisions.
Okay.
Left them so that whatever, we'll have to reevaluate after.
Okay, thank you. And then that's, that's all I have. All right, that being said, I think we've covered the consent agenda. All in favor, the consent agenda is presented and then we'll note the exceptions. It's approved 7-0. Thank you for the clerk. Any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence? None. Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman?
I think.
Item K. Okay, thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery, anything?
No.
Mr. Glavine?
No exceptions.
Mr. Shoemaker?
No exceptions.
And I have none. And I have none. So there you go. You noted the exception for Ms. Newman. Carrie, okay. I think we're good to go then. All right. That brings us, excuse me, to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel's not here today. Mr. Leonard?
There's only one item and it has been solved, resolved.
All right. Thank you. Keep up the good work, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Number one.
That brings us, that brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going.
I'll second. By Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. And-
Checkbook, well, come on, checkbook.
Mr. Roddy?
The checks.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon.
Last time we spoke, we discussed about having the, receiving the $790,000. I believe it was on Tuesday, last Tuesday, at our council meeting. And I told the council, I expect us to receive nearly $411,000 before today's meeting. And we did, in fact, receive that yesterday, Monday, the 16th, from MEMA. So we're doing well with getting our reimbursements in from the state.
That's good. Long as they didn't even-
Right now, we're well ahead. We're 60 days ahead.
Okay. Now, my second, Pete was always the same. I won't pay any case any money on it. Because I don't want, I'm a brother. Because I didn't mean to pay him because he hadn't done anything. He hadn't upgraded anything on the point. He hadn't done hard damage. I don't know. He hadn't fixed anything, hadn't fixed people's yard. So I don't know what we even paying him at all for.
On the docket today, the contractor, Needcase Brothers Construction Company, has a pay app for the project BEA 1, 2, and 3, which is the area between the bees and veterans. And they also have a pay application for the St. Michael's project on today's docket.
So the St. Michael's is the one that would be finishing?
The St. Michael's is the one under your ward. Yes, sir.
Right. Because whatever that is, I need to vote against that. I have to get some councilmen to support me. Because the man ain't doing his job. And I'm tired of paying all these contracts. They come with their song and dance. I ain't going to take care of everybody. And we get to the same thing at the end. They don't do their job. They don't finish the job. And they still have to fix stuff, people's yard, and have done nothing. Nothing at all. And the last few months-
Let me respond to that. Okay. We had a meeting last Friday with the, with the contractor. We were in a position to, to, to pay Thursday, okay? And we're asking for some extended warranty so we can finish this job. They don't, you don't pay them anything except for what you do, okay? Let's get that straight. We've been working this day after day after day. Now, if there's a possibility that we could be paving and finish this whole thing by January, is that not right?
There is that possibility.
Okay. That's all I wanted you to say. So we're doing something every day. They're inspecting every day. They count who's working. So I just want to get that straight. I hear the same thing from you every day.
Right.
Drive and see the people who are out there doing things.
Now, let me tell you something. We get all the stuff you want.
I'm telling you.
Those people every day, every day.
Gentlemen, easy, in the spirit of Christmas, let's kind of-
Every day, if they don't see anything happening, it's their property and their home that's not being taken care of. So yes, it is his fault. And I don't say you're not proud to do anything. I'm just saying it's not getting done. Because the people that live there every day, they're the ones that's suffering.
Okay. There are about 12 in that category that you just talked about. What was the plan Thursday? What was it supposed to be done? Can't be be fencing and, uh, who, with us?
Right now, there's two subcontractors that are going around to start doing fencing and also repairs to any cracked sidewalks or driveways. Landmarking can't be-
The plan is to get finished by January the 3rd. That's the plan. Now, it may not be because of some conditions that we've been checking and we continue to check. But if we, if we wind up doing, finishing this thing with an extended warranty, then this thing will be wrapped up by January where the contract calls to fall.
I mean, have they picked all the rings and, and hot and everything?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. I'm just saying. That's just another thing they've never done. People get their cars beat up every day going home. You know? I mean, you keep saying that, Bill. And I know not that you know me with him. But those people, every morning and every evening, they live that, every day. And they don't see anything happening. So that's who I represent, the people, just like you do. And that's who we're supposed to be taking care of, the taxpayers and the property owners. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other comments? Routine agenda? All in favor, the routine agenda is presented? Any exceptions?
It's Needcase.
Needcase, and there were, there were two pay apps, if I understood you, Mr. Roddy. One was for BEA 1, 2, and 3, which is in West Biloxi.
It's different.
And the other is STM 1 and 2. That's St. Michael's 1 and 2. And that's the exception that Mr. Lawrence is noting.
Right.
And, and, all right. So that's the only exception for you. The clerk note that?
Just St. Michael's.
Just St. Michael's, well, 1 and 2. Thank you. Mr. Guines, anything?
None.
Ms. Newman, anything? Any exceptions? Mr. McGilvery?
No, sir.
Mr. Glavine? Again, I'll, I'll also note an exception to the St. Michael's 1 and 2 at pay app there.